All right, let's go ahead and start. I'm calling to order, I'm calling the town council meeting of March 11th, 2019 to order. I'm afraid those of you who came last month when we had a 21-minute meeting will be sorely disappointed. That was a once-in-a-lifetime experience. And I appreciate the brevity so that everybody could get home safely in front of the snow or whatever we had that evening. I am pleased to have the representative from the Rapid, backwards here, Patrick. The Rapid Hannigan Rapidan Regional Commission, Patrick Camani, who very kindly agreed to come up to our little town and give us a few words. So without any further ado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a member of the council. Thank you for the opportunity. I might ask, I just have a 10-page handout that just has brief information about our organization. This is, I appreciate the mayor giving me the opportunity. This has been a disappointment this last month to the commission. I had a chance to meet with him back in January to talk about our organization, of which the town is a dues-paying member. We are one of 21 regional commissions across the state of Virginia. We are chartered by the localities in the region, the five counties, and the eight towns, all of which are members of our organization. The handout that I provided just kind of gives our background, what our mission is in general. We are a planning agency that works with our member local governments on long-range planning. We also have some program deliveries that occurs at a regional level, where that's either federally or state mandated, or where the localities have determined that that makes sense, provide that as appropriate services across the region. You can see our revenues for this current fiscal year, just over $1 million. I would note that the dues are at 83 cents per capita, so the town pays just over $100 per year. Rapid Hannigan County also pays that same rate minus the town's population, so there's not a difference there. And what I would say is that those local dues and that per capita rate make up about 14%, 15% of our budget on an annual basis. The rest of the funds, federal and state grants, occasionally have a nonprofit or private foundation, the frequently federal and state grants, that we letters the local funds for. You can see the break down there, the current program areas that we work on. In general, the areas we work on, environmental and natural resources planning. We have an environmental planner on staff looking at land issues, looking at environmental, Chesapeake Bay, little maximum daily load planning. We've been involved in for many years. We're sort of on the front side, so if you're familiar with the Culpeper Soil Water Conservation District and some of the PADD, EMBs and other separate, pumped-out programs that they have. The planning process comes first through us, and then the big money on the implementation side flows through the Soil and Water Conservation District. You can see transportation planning. We've got several initiatives there. We work with VIDA on rural transportation planning from a regional scale. We also have, we're the fiscal agent and have a half-time person in our office that coordinates the footpath recovery mobility system, which is, works with many people in Rapid Hannigan, through the county and others, with the Rapid Rides program. Coordinates volunteer transportation, trying to connect people where there is transit. Rapid Hannigan County, a lot of the rest of our region too, where there aren't those public transportation options, trying to coordinate those so that they're more efficient crossing, making people frankly where they need to go when they don't have other options. We are also the local president of care for the region, meaning that we are the coordinator and lead agency for homelessness response in the region, which we coordinate with shelters in Culpeper and Lockyer County. We also work with other stakeholders on affordable housing. Not developing, but trying to come up with ideas and come up with creative solutions for housing. So certainly with the mayor and I, we talked about the task force on housing that the town, that the town council has put forward, and think there are some opportunities for partnership and trying to be creative in that arena. Again, you can see regional tourism. We have a tourism website, the Tweedawers Trail, which started about four or five years ago. Specifically at the time targeted at agriculture and artisan and forestry artisans that develop, that have shops or have goods that they make here in the region. It's expanded and now has supporting organizations or supporting businesses in that website as well, including bed breakfasts, wineries, that continues to grow. We've put a renewed effort into that this year. We work with each of the county tourism directors and visitor center directors, saying, and asking, and asking. And we'd be glad to answer any questions on that if there is a dentistry again. I know there's a task force on tourism for the town and the great success that the end and other businesses here in the town have had. The two things, actually, I guess the three things I wanted to highlight that I think would be of specific interest for the council, real quick, are just our ability to provide data collection and technical assistance, our grant writing ability and our grant administration that we are capable of doing, and then the research on common issues impacting the region and the localities. One example was last year, former Mayor Sullivan, who was a commissioner at the time, got in touch and asked just to get some job descriptions for other small towns, just to share with them. I guess council will do some research on that, and so we did some very brief research and passed those back along. I resent grant writing and grant administration. Again, that's something that Mayor Patton had talked about, because it has a potential opportunity for us to be more involved with you all. We have served and administered CDG grants, community development block grants. We currently have a USDA barnacles marketing grant from the US Department of Agriculture. We have various grants that flow through annually, but we also take on one-time grants. And so if there was a locality that needed our capacity to help we manage for to write a grant, that is a service that we provide. So we'll be able to talk through in more detail there. And so then I guess the last thing is just the data collection and technical assistance. Looking through the town's comprehensive plan, and again talking with Mayor Patton. It's clear that the work of winning the comprehensive plan was thorough, but that's something where again, in the future, if there is a need for assistance on that, it's something that we can provide. Or if there's another type of plan that would be beneficial for the town, which are the usual, we can provide some of that capacity and technical assistance. So understanding your privilege, and I do appreciate the time, and really wanted to take this opportunity just to introduce myself. I thank Mayor Patton for giving me that opportunity. I don't want to be a stranger, our offices are in Culpeper, but I've been at Rapid Hannigan March, I think, five times this year, which is pretty good, I think. So we've got a staff that's equal time and part-time, so if there is a need, we can make arrangements present for the council. I've been interested in questions, and maybe we can...
Let me just, thank you so much. RRRC is an extraordinary resource, and I want, and a member of the town council will seek to exploit it fully. You are, one thing that wasn't clear when you talked about grant administration, does that require you to be a 501(c)(3), or is it just that you are an agency that these are government grants?
I mean, each grant is different, but in most of the cases where it's a government grant, we're, we call it a 501(c)(3) designation for our organization. We've been created in the past for partners, the friends of Rapid Hannigan, Pete Moncada, and others who work with other 501(c)(3)s if we need to. But in general, the type of grants, we usually deal with our government grants, which don't require that 501(c)(3) designation.
Any other questions that members of the town council have?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. Could you tell me a little bit about your Go Virginia Economic Development Program, and who heads it?
Sure. Go Virginia was developed about two and a half, three years ago. It's a state initiative that runs through the Department of Housing and Community Development. There are nine Go Virginia councils, and the target for Go Virginia is what they've termed higher-paying jobs. So anything above the median income level for the region. The region that, the Rapid Hannigan region and County Washington Rapid Hannigan County, it's called Go Virginia Region. It stretches from Charlottesville to Lockyer County. There's a council that, sort of like the regional commission, that needs, they have an economic development plan that's targeted towards targeted industries, which includes food and beverage development, food and manufacturing. So there are opportunities. I think when it first came out, Go Virginia was thought of as, oh, this is going to be money to come in and find, you know, any sort of a job we want. Really been very focused on, part of the highest paid industries.
Would that be a resource for us, because one of our task forces is business development in the town?
Well, it would in terms of if you had a project or a business that came in and potentially had a large presence. For, you know, if you're looking at small businesses coming into town, I think there are other programs that may be more likely or more beneficial. Specifically, if they're targeted towards agriculture and forestry, there's what's called a 8th day grant. There are other small business resources as well that I would probably look at before Go Virginia, but I wouldn't check out possibly.
Anything else?
Great resource, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't include my card. I have some here, which I'll leave or maybe have to pass around. The phone is always open. I do, I am sincere when I say I want the council to reach out if there are questions that we can help with, because I think we could be, I think we could be of assistance.
I'm pretty sure you can. We are grateful for your time, and I'm glad that daylight saving times will afford you the opportunity to go drive home and light.
I came in on Old Mill, as you recommended, and looked under the bridge to see the tunnel across the park over there. And thank you for putting me early on the agenda, that's always appreciated.
All right. We have two... We've got two sets of minutes, and I was just pausing for a second because I want to take a moment to acknowledge Ms. Dodd has gotten us up to date with the minutes. So I know that we heard from you and I about it, and it was important, so we are grateful. But those are now out. Let me first bring up the January 14 minutes, and these are the amended draft minutes. And ask council members if there are any changes, additions, or emissions. If none, may I have, good evening, Mr. Bennett. Is this a roll call or is this for...
I'll make a motion.
Yes, so I need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Roll call for the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
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 Okay. We have... Pardon?
Pardon, it says that.
Yes. Sorry. A motion was to approve. What was in the minutes? We have also the February 11 minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve February 11 minutes?
And Ms. Kuhn, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, sorry, roll call, Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Good. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Kuhn, for doing your editing ahead of time, giving us these polished drafts. The next thing is the mayor's report. I have several items that I want to bring up with you. I wanted to give, first of all, an update on the post office. We are proud to say that the United States Postal Service has heard the concerns of townspeople and county residents who oppose the move from the town limits, oppose the new location proposed on Route 211 because of safety concerns, or oppose the perception that the selection process was manipulated. Is now beholden on town officials to gather information about the proposed in-town site, action that is now being taken. We are in the process of pulling together documentation and other materials that they seek. To that end, I do want to make it known publicly one more time that the town council may at its April meeting make a motion to tear down the dilapidated building on the site in town that we have offered for the post office, if it is not planned and moved in the very near future. This offer was first put forth in December, and I will remind people in the town and in the community that that offer is closing very soon. Second thing I wanted to bring up with you is the task force follow-up. A number of people in 2018 took the time and energy to devote to an analysis of the town, its needs, and how to address them. And this was a follow-up to the town's comprehensive plan that provides both concrete steps and a vision for moving forward as a community. The task force has met all through last year and offered a substantial number of good ideas. It is up to us as town council members not to let this momentum end. And I have asked my fellow town council members to continue this progress by overseeing the good work already started in infrastructure, business and tourism development, community involvement, and beautification of the town. We need members of the community who are willing to continue to help the town, so members of the council may call on you, both townspeople and people in the community, in the near future to assist us. Third, I mentioned the comprehensive plan above, which developed a consensus vision for the town through a set of public forums that were held in October of 2016. It is time, once again, to garner public input. We need your thoughts, your ideas, and your dreams. We would like to hold two public forums this month, which townspeople and interested community members beyond the town would be invited to. This is something that is coming up on our agenda tonight, so I am premature in announcing it, but I do want to at least make sure that people are aware of it. These forums will seek your input and ideas about the town's future. So please come to one of the forums and bring your dreams. And the forums are from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, March 16th, and Sunday, March 31st. The fourth item I want to bring up, I bring up with a hint, a note of sadness that Andy McIntyre, a longtime resident of the town and a former member of the town council and treasurer, died a week ago Saturday. I'd like to, I knew Andy relatively well. He is survived by his widow, Barbara. He lived on Mount Salem Avenue, and he did an extraordinary amount of work for the town when he was treasurer. And we will miss him dearly. Finally, I would like to bring to your attention the talk that is going on tomorrow evening at the Public Library by Ross Chapin. Ross Chapin is the gentleman who wrote this book about pocket neighborhoods. He is coming to talk to us here at Rapid Hannigan. He'll be at the Public Library at 7:00 p.m. He will talk, I assume, about pocket neighborhoods, which is a concept that might work well for addressing the town's future growth. So I would urge everybody who has any interest in the town and its future to attend that talk. I had been told it would be owed by 8:30. And those are all of my report for this meeting. Treasurer's report, Ms. Swift.
Any questions? Any of those, or can I ask?
Sure, I'd be happy to take one.
Talk about this, the spot that you're selling the building or giving the building away.
Right.
So then...
We're very negotiable on that.
When was that prepared to be done?
Mr. Bennett?
It's 18th of March. March 18th.
It's basically three months since the December.
You can pass that for a moment.
And then, should the post office contractor, following through with the content that has been offered, will they, are you carrying this down any minute? I don't know, is it optional or too much?
No, we will, I believe that we have a responsibility to tear down the building.
Do we have any cost?
We do not have any cost. Everything is still very tentative at this point, so it's hard to, we have not gone to the effort. We're still working to try to rest the post office back to the tenement, so we haven't begun looking at some of those things. But we have looked at a lot of the other factors that the postal service wants to see invested in. So we feel good, but I try to be pessimistic in this thing in this process, and so I just want to say I feel good. I don't want to be overly optimistic in this process. But I do not feel pessimistic. I just come from...
What you're recording on is that, well, that, you literally, that was in...
I want to say, I think I said it very again, but I want to say it one more time. I am very proud and appreciative of all the efforts that people in the town and the community made to sign the petition, to write letters, for one of the rare instances they were heard. And it was, it is deeply appreciated by all of us in the community who care about this issue. Any other questions? Thank you for asking that question. I'll, let me leave, take a moment and ask if there are any questions from the public about this? Yes, sir.
On the removal of the existing structure. Two things. I'm pretty sure you've already worked through this, but I remember there was a concern about a violation of the historic district. And so I hope that whatever problems arose two years ago have been resolved. Second thing, it might in the long run save the town money to post a notice in papers of some circulation, whether it be in Front Royal or whether it be in Warrington, about an opportunity at no cost for salvage that if someone were to come and remove it, for appropriately insured and certified agents, contact the clerk to make arrangements. In many places, the value of what could be salvaged from just one or two of those logs would be attractive enough to have somebody that knows what they're doing come and take it down safely and remove it and clean the site. I'm not sure that's been done. I'm not even sure if there was a notice, maybe I missed it. It was in the revenue.
In the revenue.
I didn't see it. It might have just been a notice, a notice to the public that the town was considering removal or demolition. If you worded it a little differently to attract people who do this kind of barn salvage, you might actually get a taker. It might be worth, I don't know what it cost to post a notice. But it would not be posting it for legal purposes. It would just be posting it to see if you can attract an interested party.
First, we posted what was legally required. And I thought we said in there that we consider proposals about the structure.
You may have, but I think it was lost in legal ease. I do remember that, I do remember the legal notice, and that it was there for a reason. But this would be a little bit different purpose. Once you decided you were moving.
You bring up a really good point, because if that house was built before 1930, the likelihood is that it's got chestnut in it.
Well, there was actually an assessment made by two different independent experts, and they said the only value of it, if you tried to conserve it, it would almost have to be all reconstructed. However, they thought there were still a half a dozen aged, I think, chestnut, or of some antiquity. Was it chestnut? Logs that had value, so. Obviously, the town is not in possession of the expertise, but someone either in the town or in the larger community would be.
Yep. That's a good point. Thank you very much.
It's too bad that Sheila's not here tonight. I'm thinking that was her barn that was just taken down off of...
Sheila Greasey?
Yes. As you turn up from Massey's Corner, heading towards St. Helmut, there was an old barn. It is now down, and it looks like it was salvaged. So you might give her a call. Was it a packing house? I yield to better knowledge, it was a packing house.
Lots of apple.
It was a packing house. It was not a barn.
There's also, I think it's called the Virginia Trader, is that the name of that? Where a lot of craftsmen look through here for...
That's a good term, sorry. What's it called, Virginia?
Valley Trader.
Valley Trader.
Two other questions. My, what's Justin's last name who does cabinet work, or Peter Prainer? Any contacts at salvage?
We've talked to Peter.
And Justin's a great idea, too.
Mayor contacts.
It's right there. No, he's right there.
That is the old package, right, across the street?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I thought you were the last one.
I used to know Justin.
All right.
Sure, if I may. One thought that I have is, find out some companies that deal in old wood products. Just contact them directly and make sure that they work. We're, I knew there was one at Rutgersville. Yeah, they're still there. And they, based on what they sell it for, they should be very attractive, still.
Madison Wood Preservers?
Yeah, this is, it was, I also learned from Longtimer.
In Rutgersville, tell me?
Just outside Rutgersville. I think it's up 33.
Okay.
But they, they are a major player in the old wood market.
Okay. Thank you for all those comments. Excellent. Yours and Gary, yours as well, thank you. I'll see about the Rutgersville, see if I can try to scrounge that up. All right.
Something else I might know, who cut some rough hearing beams from me when I was redoing the, what's now the newspaper building. It's Donald Rollins. He knew people, and he went and found them, he knew exactly where they were, so it might be somebody who is.
Okay.
Don't let him buy them.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question.
This is about the mayor's report?
Let's see, Patrick, what do you see? It has A, B, C, D, E, F, G, count them, something like that.
Yeah, you're talking about old business. We're not there yet.
Oh, it's this new business.
We're not even there yet.
Okay. I thought you were open.
We're still just...
I thought you were finished with this paper.
We're just, no, no, no. We're still, we're arguing. So at that point, treasurer's report, Ms. Swift.
Thank you. Nothing unusual to report, is that in front of you?
I like brief reports. I do not, I do see a member of the planning commission here. I see two members of the planning commission there. I apologize.
They're being built.
May I have a motion to approve? Ms. Schneider, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All right, thank you. I apologize. Such a hurry to get going. Planning commission, you have a report?
I would make it 30 seconds or less. We had an organizational meeting last, two weeks ago, and at that time Drew agreed and was appointed as secretary, and Julie DeSarno was appointed vice chair.
Okay. Congratulations. Okay. Thank you. Any member of the architectural board here? I do know they, they had the one thing, which is to, they approved a railing to go on the steps by Trinity Church going down to Warren Avenue. Did they, I think that was the only thing that they discussed over the last month.
There is no meeting this week.
Okay. And there's no meeting this week. Mr. Bennett?
Sure. I believe the date to receive offers or proposals for the old house was actually February 14th, kind of the phase. And, but that doesn't, it didn't, through the council from further, entertain further interest in property or soliciting further interest. I think the name of the company at Rutgersville is Malcom.
Oh, yeah. I know that. All right, old business. We have, we can't do right now.
Yeah, I have to, I just don't know.
No, I mean in terms of mother and so on, so forth.
Oh, okay. So, yeah.
And we did it two weeks ago. It was in January. We did approve spending money for the electrical engineers to go and really price out the big step for us. So that, I mean, okay.
Any other questions or any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
It was a roll call.
Oh, it was a roll call? Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
That has passed.
Thank you. Need to shine. I don't want to do, well, you know, Brad goes flipping off all those box farmers everywhere, so, you know. Just call me Brad Junior. Just don't make me pretend I'm an engineer.
All right. Calm down. All right. What's next?
Streetlights.
Streetlights.
Streetlight update. You will see, we had, what, 13? 14? 12? Twelve streetlights out. And yes, we're working, Laura and I are working with Dark Skies Narrowly P to come up with a final proper bulbs, relighting everything. But in the meantime, because we were so concerned about the safety of people walking around town, Laura and I went to Lowe's last week and we bought outdoor bulbs. And I already see has put up two so far. The one Laura, it's set right opposite the inn on Warren, on the middle. And the other one is behind the treasurer's office.
Behind which office?
The treasurer's office. Yeah, so those are the two temporary, we call them temporary bulbs. But they are LED, did get them warm.
How did, how are they look?
I haven't seen them. We haven't seen them yet. We just put them on.
Others?
Yes. Can see them tonight.
So give it another half hour and then everybody can take the joint after.
There'll be more coming up. And the, the two first ones are, are still up on gate at Warren and Porter that we don't like, but we're leaving them up until we find the ones we do like.
And then these again, there was one behind the treasurer's office.
Yes. Just on the list.
Just wanted to ask. Okay, where's the other? Other people there.
Right, right in, literally across. I saw him in the middle looking at the.
They are absolutely better than that. No one does it all.
No.
Do that for a guest.
On the side. Oh, I know. So would like this, do we just get it from Lowe's or are you going? They don't comply with the dark skies. They were kind of, who was that? Yes. The dark skies people have given us a recommendation and we've ordered two bulbs. They may have to be reper fitted or whatever, but we're, we're going to be ordering the two and then we'll see how those fit.
All right. Thank you. Hey. Next on is new business. So first is authorization of a budget work session for April 12, 2019, not 2018. From, from nine AM to, to 12, actually PM. I'm not working here for fifteen hours. It's a Friday.
It's a Friday?
Friday is April 12, nine to 12. 12 noon, nine AM to 12 noon. For that, do we need to have, what do we need to do, Mr. Bennett?
Do we need that?
What is, what is the contemplation of that?
To, to work session.
Just work session, yeah. Just, as long as you just give a notice.
All right.
To vote, giving a vote to have a meeting on that thing. Yeah, a work session, you can't take any votes or any legal action on it.
Do we need a motion tonight?
Yes.
I make a motion that we have a budget work session on Friday, April 12, of nine AM to 12 PM.
12 noon. Nine AM to 12 noon. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll let Joe get, get his.
Joe will be the second.
Mr. Wyatt has the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All right, any opposed? All right, that is.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wyatt.
I'm not opposed to a budget work section, but I can add another point that's in the way. I took off for a barn about three years ago for.
All right, so it was not unanimous, it was six. We, we have an authorization of a joint public hearing with the planning commission to consider and adopt an ordinance to amend Article 5.2, additional yard regulations of the zoning ordinance of Washington, Virginia by adding a subsection 5-2-4 to provide as follows. In all areas, the front side and back yard setbacks for structures to be used for post office, postal services, mail and package distribution. Similar uses may be reduced by the governing line to any distance of at least five feet or more. The background on this is in order to fit the post office and the other requirements that the postal services require, we would have to amend the setbacks in order to fit the structure onto the property. The postal service is requiring eighteen parking spaces, which means that virtually everybody can come to the post office at the same time. Plus, plus trucks, two tractor trailer trucks. And by gosh, we will have your eighteen parking spaces. But in order to squeeze them into the property, we have to adjust the setbacks and retain some distance, I believe it's five feet. But that is the reason for this public hearing with the planning commission to consider and adopt this ordinance as an amendment to Article 5-2.
So do you need a motion for the hearing?
Well, can you status a question?
Well, let's have a motion first.
Oh, okay.
If we can.
Some any questions?
All right, and a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Discussion, questions?
We're going to reduce it to five feet. What is, what is it currently at?
Current ones are side yard fifteen, rear thirty. Side yard fifteen. And then the front depends on what road it's on, since this is on, on 211. It's thirty-five feet from the center line, which actually makes the setback, if you measure it, not much at all.
Okay.
About ten.
So. The way this is drafted, just in case it was changed and planned, but right now what is contemplated, they'd be about ten feet from the rear. And that's the only setback that would be not in compliance with the existing ordinance.
And at the rear there is that water feature, trees. So there's a natural buffer there between what would be happening with post office and the joint lot that the town sold earlier. So I think it's, and it's limited to only post offices. So it couldn't be used for, you know, high.
Sort of a one-time use.
One-time thing. And the way it's contemplated, it would work out very well because of that buffer. And I drafted it that any of the setbacks could be very, just in case they have changed plan at last minute, then there's the authority to make the adjustments without having to adopt any ordinance.
And there's not a firm plan in place, but the tentative plan that has been shared with a few members, it's very clear that they are trying to have as much of a buffer in terms of, for the opportunity to have greenery on the Warren Avenue and the Leggett Lane size of the post office. So you're not going to have this post office glaring at you. You'll have some greenery to, to cover it as much as we can. Any other questions or discussion? Then we have a motion in front of us. All those in favor for approval, please indicate by saying aye.
Excuse me, so, so the motion would be to authorize, advertise a public hearing to occur at the next meeting with, joint meeting with the planning commission.
Yes.
And the planning commission would have to agree to that. So it's just advertising, but it's a roll call vote to advertise.
Oh.
All right. Are we doing roll call? At the require, at the request of the town clerk, we're going reverse order. Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
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 All right. Thank you very much. All right. The next, so there will be a public hearing on this. The next item is consideration of possible adoption of a resolution providing for snow removal on Leggett Lane in the post office parking lot if a post office facility is constructed in accordance with the existing contract for the sale of the town lot by the town or by contractor or contractors selected from time to time by the town. And I don't think I need to read this. I think all of us are adults and can read this. What I can do is tell you some of the background, which is as of this time, the town already contracts to remove snow from Leggett Lane so that there is access to the waste water plant. This has, has part of the process. Do I have that wrong? Okay, then I have that wrong.
Which we, we're trying to find someone who will do it consistently.
All right. So it is, is the intent of the town.
It's part of the SSS contract and now somebody is no longer there.
All right. It is the intent to always have that road clear.
Yeah, Leggett Lane needs to be cleared. I don't see that we should be paying to plow the post office.
That was.
Developer who owns the property and leasing to the postal service, the postal service itself has adequate resources to contract for various things. They do repairs and other things. I don't think the town needs to be, you know, overly generous.
I, I understand what you're saying. The person who has been working with us in this process has said that the post office has usually not done as good a job in subcontracting that as they should. And that if we wanted it done properly, that it should be something that we should make sure that it is, to have a guarantee that, that it gets done. That's what I can tell you from my conversation.
Now, we got, got some of the loads. Why wouldn't they do the?
The parking lot.
Oh, just the parking lot.
The parking lot.
And.
Did they do this, did I plow white lanes?
No.
No, I don't think there's enough.
They probably.
There's not enough use on that to, to do that.
All right. Let's see, more.
So, you know, the way I understand it, just to have a little perspective, is that it's sort of, you want us to move forward and leave this in here, you know, I think. It's, it is very unusual to go, I'm, I'm not aware of any time going on private property that do snow removal, but.
Well, that would be.
It's got a certain context to it in this case.
Well, essentially my concern is if we hire a contractor, he's on Leggett Lane. That's basically part. Then that contractor goes on to private property and there are damages because we hired him, now we're responsible. I'm, I'm, I really don't see, and it's not that big a piece of property that, you know, we.
Eighteen parking places.
I know it's eighteen parking places, but we start, we live in a very litigious society today. And I would be very concerned, you know, if someone tears up a curb or breaks a gate or fence or something, next thing you know, you've got a bill for repairs from the postal service.
Brad, that was something that came up right away about what's the town exposure. So it's not drafted to say that the town will do it, it says the town or a contractor. Now, if we get a contractor, if he does something, he's an independent contractor unless we gave him some direction that, unusual direction that resulted and directly resulted in some damage. The town is insulated there from any claims. And if you have the requirement that any contractor doing work carries their own insurance too. And that the town is a main party.
Then that contractor needs to be very clear.
I know. John, the lawyer, sure.
Yeah.
Who, who does it right now in front of the little Washington Post Office? Landowner. They don't do anything at all, ever.
I might need some guidance.
So this is a good discussion, but tonight we're just authorizing to have a discussion.
Right.
So.
Those are my.
So those are valuable concerns and hopefully we can provide you some more additional information that are, when this brings up.
Is this, is this, is this coming up at the public hearing, too?
Yes.
I don't think it's not. No, it's.
No, you're not. Oh, this is, this is just a group.
Yeah, you could actually vote on it.
So this is, so this is a discussion. I apologize, Ms. Ritten. It was part, as Mr. Bennett so well stated, this was part of the process. This was the only incentive that we were offering to, to make the deal viable, to keep the post office intact.
How did the subject even come up, snow removal?
Probably a snowy day when the.
Yeah.
I think the, the, the person with whom we've been talking has had experience with the post office similar to the experience that the current landlord of the post office here in town has had, where the post office does nothing to maintain the snow removal, the landscaping, anything.
Doesn't even pick up trash in front of the post office or Washington.
Or have a trash can.
Why they removed the trash can.
They need to see the trash can.
Yeah, that required emptying.
Don't be a.
So I wonder if they're going to clean their own trash from the empty space. Or we have to do that.
Come here.
We can't understand what you're doing anyways.
Patrick has experienced, experienced in this, and he'd be a great contractor to just take care of.
I think that will be rejected.
Yeah.
That, that is, bring up a point. If, you know, based on the way they conduct themselves to the facility right now, what does happen with trash and other?
That's the resource problem.
Well, should, is the snow removal.
I know, but I mean, I'm just.
But it's.
If I may, how much should we spend on the snow removal year now? None.
Right.
Okay. But we have to start because the waste water plant, they're requesting that we keep it plowed.
Right.
Well, that's, so if mine does actually do, the police officer would decide to do it, isn't it? I think, I mean.
I think for the overall, we hope is the economic positive of the post office, the profit of a thousand dollar, we have to consider move, snow in the parking lot for two or three times a snow, but not use snow removals more workable investment at this point.
Pond trees.
As course, it's properly insured, etc., to make sure that we're, and then to that extent, we should break down the postal.
Thank you. Well said. Any other questions?
If I may, mention one other thing. Brad, a huge concession by the post office, they're going to bring the sewer under the road to the site. It's not going to be the town responsible for that.
That's true.
Yeah. Isn't it?
Because on the other side of the street.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. So they're going to bring, they're going to all, all the cost to pay for construction of that, so anybody does.
Yeah. Well, but still, that was not something we had anticipated.
Well, we have to go on to the straights. We have to go down the red line. I mean, ESS has already been there. I mean, it's, it, but it's good. We've got to win.
The, the nice thing is that we do not have that cost.
Right.
So this was, this is how an incentive to, to again persuade the postal service to keep it down.
Paywall, have to put in a meter and.
Yeah, yeah. So we have a motion. Do we have any other questions or comments? Mr. Bennett, you look like you're dicking for something here. You all set?
I'm all set. Clean me up, I love.
All those in favor?
We need a second.
I thought we had a second.
No, and we need to make one adjustment.
All right, we had, the motion was made by?
Gail.
Gail?
No. I'm already, well, then I.
No, I just made a motion.
We didn't have.
All right, let's start over. All right, let's start over. With the amendment of having, providing for snow removal by an insured or bonded.
I don't know those words.
All right, oh, by a contractor. Insured contractor, okay. That's in the fourth line, by a bonded. So the, you move for this with the amendment? All right. Is there a second?
Second.
I have Ms. Swift, second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, thank you. The next item is again with the post office is a consideration of possible adoption of a resolution authorizing the town to pay the sewer tappy of fifteen thousand and the water tappy of five thousand. This would be an important thing for us to be able to be on the same page financially with the other location, which does not have any tapties. The town would pay these tapties for this building, for the post office.
Okay, we're already doing right?
Because we do not want to, we do not want to have a policy of waiving any tapties. So in other words, we're paying ourselves.
Actually, it's, sorry, moving from one column, I'm trying to correct here. I say something incorrect here. Moving from one column to another, there's no negative expensive debt.
So that we're not on a standard of that in residence.
From the accounting standpoint, would that be from general, the water works and general until?
Yes. And this is because of the other side, there aren't any of these fees.
Other side. Oh, yes, right.
And a motion? Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor, please indicate.
Roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 All right. Finally, as I indicated early on, that I'd like to have consideration of posting public forums on the sixteenth and thirty-first days of March from two to four P M. What's important is that it is contemplated that these forums will be continued meetings of the council as work sessions. Members of the planning commission and the A R B would be invited to attend and participate. The reason we have this language in here is because, as we all know, with the Freedom of Information Act, it is not feasible for more than members of anybody that is appointed or elected by the town to be in any kind of meeting unless it is publicized ahead of time. So these public forums would allow any member of the town council, any member of the planning commission, or any member of the architectural bureau to be able to attend the meeting and to participate in meetings by having them as a work session or, or would be continued meetings of the council as work sessions. So in other words, we are not having an adjournment this evening, but we will have a continuation. We'll continue on as the news on the sixteenth and the thirty-first.
So that will be this Saturday?
This would be this Saturday.
And how will the public know about it if we're just doing it now? This is the?
True.
Eleven.
I'm going to send it to the newspaper first thing.
We'll send first thing tomorrow morning.
I'll submit it this week.
Right, and then we'll also.
It'll be on E R S and I'll send it out in the, in the county notice. Just about as much as we can do.
And I also will mention in tomorrow night's meeting, tomorrow night's presentation. All right. I will go ahead and break tradition since I suggested this, I will go ahead and move for this. And thank you from Ms. Swift. Any other discussion or questions?
Fair, I have a form of motion, just to put in details here. Motion of the town council would host a public forum council work session on the sixteenth and twenty-fourth days of March, four sixteen.
Thirty-first, sixteen, thirty-first. We had to move it.
Okay, thirty-first. Four sixteen, that's town hall. Town hall for the purpose of discussion of the town's future in land use plan. All town residents and other interested parties are invited to attend and express their views. If there's not a forum of council attendance, the mayor or vice mayor or other council person shall conduct a public forum, not as a work session of council. Brief notes shall be made and returned to council for their consideration.
That's it.
Good. All right, that's after what I thought I said. But I'm going to add it so, thanks, my lady.
Can you just give me the video so I don't screw it?
All right. If there are no other questions or discussion, I, let's have a vote. Do we need to have a roll call vote on this? All right, Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you. At this moment, we have public questions and comments from the public?
Yes, I have a question about the, with new business. You were talking about distances around the post office facility. Since my cousin's houses is right there where we're going to be putting the post office possibly. So I was looking at, it says the governing body will decide, you know, the distance at least five feet or more. So would that go onto my cousin's property or?
No, it would provide at least a five foot, it would stay on our property and there would be a five, at least a five foot. And as of right now, it's approximately ten-foot buffer between the edge of the building and the town's, the property line of this facility. So there'd be ten feet before you get to the property. Right now it's fifteen. Right now it's fifteen feet is the requirement.
So you're going to be ten feet from where the post office is to your cousin's property?
To the cousin's property.
So what it's doing is?
It will not go over onto your cousin's property at all. It will be ten feet away from that line.
And the other question I had with the trail that goes through there, will that interfere with that trail or?
My hope is it will enhance the, it, it may interfere and that we will be talking to different organizations, R C is perhaps one of them, about putting in some trails to, if that one does have to be replaced, to find trails to allow the connection of that post office to various points in the town.
You're telling about the butterfly trail?
Yes, the butterfly trail now is on private property. That doesn't exist anymore. You know, we can't, you can't say that. It's only with their permission that you can go on it anyway.
Okay, I thought they had said that they could keep that open.
I did too.
Yeah.
But it's not on this property.
Okay. And there is a stream in there, so what happens with that?
Will stay there? There's a little cross over the bridge, but that's actually on Drew and Bill's property. That's not on this property.
Okay, because it also borders it back.
Yep.
Right.
But it does not impact this, this property.
If the construction did not.
Right.
The river.
Well, the parking.
We can't argue.
Yes, sir. Couple of quick words. Was there a reason for the, specifically for the post office variance when a variance would not have been available under any ordinary circumstances? There was a reason?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Yeah, the reason is that because the eighteen spaces.
No, not the need, but typically if a developer would bring a proposal to the council, the council could, by special, application for special variance, have changed the setbacks anyway. I assume that this is so that that's a done deal and it's no longer an issue.
Well, the reason they have the ordinance wait is, is to get flexibility because we're not absolutely certain where it will end up.
So this is a blanket essentially, rather than just a separate. Is there a sponsor for tomorrow night's cross chapter, did the town bring it?
No, I think that is rapid home.
Rapid home, right, okay. Third one, I think I have an instrument, but I heard just today, someone was complaining is probably that description, that in order to get the post office to stay in town, the town council is going to pay the water and sewer bills in the future.
No.
I understand where the confusion is. There's a one-time waiver of the settlement.
Not a waiver.
Not a waiver.
Not a waiver, that the town will pay it.
Yes, so.
And not the developer. Just in case that comes up, good language, Brad, thank you. We should all be on the same page so that we can, when citizens and others of the town. Concerned citizens. Concerned citizens of the town and many concerned citizens that don't live in town want to have a conversation with us about what the town is doing to bend over backwards to keep the life of the post office in town. We should all be clear that the town is paying the cost for the installation of the sewer and the water, right? The hookup fees. No, the tap fees. Tap fees. The town is not paying the installation fees. The tap fees, it's a one-time thing and from then on, the tenant.
They have to pay all the construction. They're paying, we just consider it.
But that is out there. I'm just glad I bring that to your attention. I appreciate you're telling us about that and that we are able to provide that clear. I'm pleased not to be corrected. Good. It's a rare occasion, we're advocating. We like to be advocate in our house. Nancy, anything right?
Can town council members speak at this?
No, forget it.
I just have one thing that's been bothering me, maybe it's been taken care of, but when we had the election for us, the town charter still says, at least on the website, that it's the first, it's May first or whatever. It doesn't say, did we ever change the town charter? Shouldn't we?
Good.
Have you changed it?
No, that's just a way of the country.
The charter has. It says, the five council members, the treasurer and the mayor.
We'd have to go to our delegate and have him present.
It says, an election for five council members, the treasurer and the mayor shall be held on the first Tuesday in May. This was nineteen eighty-six. Election shall be held on the first Tuesday.
What did the other municipalities do?
I believe, I don't have it right in front of me. But the section says that you can change it to the other date irrespective of anything that's in the charter.
I think there was a blank grant. There must have been by the general assembly because otherwise. That's good.
Should we change it on this, on the town charter?
That comes from the state, so we can change it.
You might want to put an answer to the court note and put a note to the charter saying that, actually, the general sense of whatever it is, permitting municipalities to adjust their election dates, the town of Washington moved their, required election to the first one.
Okay, so can you, could John write something else that we could add to this in OXO or website or, so we have it?
I could, like a footnote?
Okay. So anything else from council members or extra council members or the public or anyone? All right. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I was wondering who came up with the time for the meetings?
I did.
Two to four.
You can blame me alone. The suggestion is that two to four is not a helpful time for everyone. Well, the problem is Sunday, you're, you can't do it in the morning and I want to have one day on Saturday and one day on Sunday. And unfortunately, Saturday morning, there was, the sixteenth, there was a, there was a conflict.
There's somebody in here.
There was a conflict.
And then on Sunday, the.
Would be a better time.
We always have to work around on something short term. We have groups that use the building, so.
So the sixteenth is set and the thirty-first is a Sunday?
Yes.
And the sixteenth is a Saturday?
Yes. So I want to give an option of one day for each weekend. And I did the weekend because we have more, the potential for weekenders coming in versus in the evening. Because sometimes people, once they get home, they just don't want to come back out again.
May I make a suggestion? It happens to you three times tonight, that when we put a date like June fifth, that we put down the date so people know in the future.
That's a good idea. All right. If there are no other questions, then I will close the public forum. There, I do not believe there is need for a closed session this evening. Now we will have a continuation of this meeting. Do we need to have a motion to continue?
Yes, sir. I was suggesting to continue to both dates, that it be continued to the sixteenth.
Sixteenth and the thirty-first.
Subsequently to the thirty-first and then the regular meeting will resume the second day.
All right. Or would we close it after the thirty-first?
Um, we could.
But we would need to have a forum.
That's the reason, we can continue to the sixteenth and the thirty-first and also to the, then resume the regular meeting.
Then we will continue it to the eighth. Okay.
So it's all, whether there's a forum or not, there's, it's already done.
Do I need to have language for the continuation at this point?
Yes, there should be a motion.
Can we only make a motion?
Well, that was a motion to have a continuation. Now, instead of having a motion to adjourn this meeting, we have to have a motion to continue the meeting.
Continue the meeting. The sixteenth and thirty-first and the thirty-first and then resume the regular meeting.
I make a motion that we continue this meeting to Saturday, March sixteenth and Sunday, March thirty-first. Is that good?
A second? Brad, seconds? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Thank you very much. We got it here pretty well.